Seeing the presence of a quorum of the AMER School Committee and calling to order the meeting on Tuesday, September 21st at 6:34 PM. We'll begin with roll call attendance. Please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. And we have many others from the community that are joining for the public forum when it begins later. And I just ask to, just as another reminder, for everybody to stay muted until your call done. We'll begin with, our first item is approval of the minutes. And those are the minutes from our meeting on August 31st, which are attached to the agenda item in Board Docs. Did anybody have any edits? I noticed that in several places in the topic related to the elementary school building project, that the Chair of the Building Committee's name is spelled incorrectly. It's S-C-H-O-E-N. And it's spelled as S-H-A-N-E in the minute. So I'm guessing that you could do a global replace for that to catch all the multiple places where that was. That was all that I noted. Did anybody have any other edits?
Just want to note there are really excellent drafted minutes. I appreciate the detail and organization from our new recorder.
I will second that. Very thorough, thank you. So with that, I'll move that we approve the minutes as amended from August 31st. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, then seconded by Harrington. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have public comment. There is a very large document attached to this item. I will note that the last comment in that document is about 14 pages, if not a little bit more than that. So per our public comment policy, no speaker will have more than three minutes to speak. We do have one voice comment, but as we scroll through, I will scroll through slowly and limit the extra long ones to three minutes on screen. And for the public, that final document is posted in Board Docs, so you may read along at home if you can't see it on screen very well. So we'll start with the voice comment.
Hi, Jimmy Dion, resident of AMER and parent of fifth and second graders at Fort River. I'd like to make three points. First, I vigorously support the school building project. I know as well as anyone about the space limits and building details of Fort River and Wildwood. My fifth grader's quote classroom is a converted cafeteria, so I fully support construction of a new building ASAP. Second, I am less enthusiastic about placing sixth graders in middle school from a child development perspective. We all know how delicate between years are. You have a very wide range of maturity. To place children who may have just turned 11 in August in the same school as adolescents turning 14 with all the complex questions around sexuality, peer pressure, drug use, gives many of us pause. I've heard a lot of talk about possible benefits of middle school, like enhanced academic activities. I haven't heard any of the details, though. And when you look at the research on this question, the literature is very clear. Sixth graders do better in elementary school than in middle school. Multiple well-designed studies from Duke and Columbia, Harvard, show worse behavioral and academic outcomes for sixth graders placed in middle school versus at elementary school. There's never been a study that showed any academic or social emotional benefit from moving sixth graders to the middle school. But given the situation we're in, I don't see any realistic way around moving them. I'm sure most kids will do fine in the end, but let's be honest with ourselves. We're asking the sixth graders to make a kind of sacrifice on behalf of future K-5 students. The move is purely driven by the need for physical space, not because there's some unaddressed academic or social emotional need faced by sixth graders. I get the need for space, but a school is more than a physical space. Which brings me to my third point. To make this sacrifice fair, the current fifth graders deserve the most careful academic and emotional preparation for a successful life in middle school. Also, the fourth graders will be fifth graders next year. This is a disruptive process that simply cannot be rushed. Add this to the disruption caused by COVID and the culture of their elementary school experience by a year seems unfair. This should not be sprung on the current fifth graders partway through the school year. They began the school year after missing over three months of third grade and nearly the entire fourth grade year. They came in expecting two more years of elementary school, and they deserve it. I'm not against new programs. I know that district can do a good job with new programs. My second grader was in the first coming out of kindergarten, has been very successful. But the planning that went into that program took over two years. It was not suddenly announced partway through a school year and crammed into nine months. My message to the school committee is, move the sixth graders if you must.
As mentioned, comments are limited to three minutes. I am having an error with my browser in trying to share. I'm going to try again. Let's see if that works. Yep, okay. Phew. Folks able to see that? Yeah, okay. So as mentioned, this document is posted on the Board Docs Agenda Item for Public Comment. There is many more pages to that last comment that are all available online in the agenda. I will also note that we've received a high volume of email that was not labeled specifically as public comment, and so those were not included in here. Any of those that came in that looked like they were intended to be shared and were shared only with me, I did forward on to the committee members, including a couple that came in after the 3 o'clock deadline. For any others that are specifically related to the AMER School Committee decision on October 5th, you're welcome to continue to send us email. And if you would like to include that in public comment for that meeting on October 5th, please do label that as such. I am now going to move on to our next item, which is the Superintendent's Update. And for that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Sure. Thank you very much. And I think maybe just because there are people on this call, do you mind if I just, either of us could just lay out the agenda? Because I think some people are raising their hand and maybe unclear of the format of when we're going to get to the public forum and all. I can do it, or you can do whatever you like.
I'd be happy to do it. For those, I did talk about it before we actually opened the meeting, but we have a few more procedural items on our agenda. The public forum is scheduled to begin as our first item up in our new and continuing business. So we first will hear a Superintendent's Update. If you're following along on Board Docs, the agenda, Superintendent's Update. I will have a brief, share a brief Chair's Update. And then there's a couple minutes for any announcements from other school committee members. And at that point, we'll move into a presentation from Dr. Morris on the possible move of sixth grade to middle school. At that point, we'll open it up for public participation in the forum. And it's great that you've found the raise hand function. I do believe that whatever order folks click on that raise hand is the order that you will be in, in the queue, so to speak. So either I or Dr. Morris will call on you in the order that the hands are raised. But please use that as the mechanism, and we'll ask you to unmute yourself when it's your turn to talk.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure everyone is clear on that, because I think everyone was on the call the first time you shared that. So sorry to ask you to do that. I'll keep my update as brief as possible, given the interest in some of the agenda items in the public forum. It's Latino Heritage Month. It runs from September 15th to October 15th each year, basically independence that happened around that time for a number of Latin American countries. There's a large number of ways that the district is honoring and celebrating the month. Thursday, the weather keeps looking slightly better, so we'll make a decision tomorrow, but I believe we'll hold it to Thursday morning. We're going to have an event, as we have the last couple of years, with the exception of last year, at Town Hall with the flag raising, which is a longstanding tradition in the community. Town Manager Bakula and myself will briefly speak. Dr. Guevara, who is the head of our family center, has done incredible amount of work. We'll have, again, weather permitting, some music. The former mayor of San Juan will be joining us, and we'll be putting the flag, the actual flag that was raised after Hurricane Maria, sorry, in Puerto Rico. So it's a particularly special event this year. So in addition to that, in particular, all of our schools are doing a number of different educational activities within their classrooms and within their schools, including assemblies, educational books. Our librarian's been fabulous about making sure our staff have books to celebrate different aspects of the month, because let's you know, there is no one thing, right? It's many, many countries in Latin America. So I want to thank everyone for their work on that. Second, I want to share the open house schedule. Cracker Farm will be the 14th of October, as well as Wildwood, and Fort River will be the 13th of October. And this year, it'll be live synchronous, but virtual, just from a health and safety perspective, we're doing that. But unlike last year, which was more pre-taped videos, this will be live and virtual, and allow for two-way communication. More details on a specific times and grade levels, all that will come directly from building principals. I want to, you know, and I'm going to write about this, I believe, on Friday in the update, just really thank staff. They're doing incredible work for the first few weeks, getting everything up and running with all of our students back. It's also incredibly challenging work, you know? And I do think it's worth, you know, something I'll ask people to do is thank a bus driver, thank a parent educator, thank a teacher. I rarely give homework to members of the community, but I do think the work that's happening, you know, it's like, you know, I wrote an email to staff this week, yesterday. Both things are true. The work is incredibly challenging, and it's incredibly important to our students and our community. And both things can be true, but I do think the more we celebrate our staff members, it goes a long way in terms of morale, and it's well deserved. So just want to note that and just encourage folks, since there's a lot of people probably watching this call, use a little bit of that privilege I have to be speaking to a large audience tonight, to really make sure that we're thanking the people who are doing, you know, teaching and working during a pandemic is no easy gig, and people are doing a great job of it in all of our three elementary schools. I'll briefly mention MCAS scores came out and publicly released today. Our scores were remarkably good, given the weird year that we had. I think there's a number of factors that go into that, but relevant to my prior point, the staff members really rose to the challenge and, you know, I think deserve a lot of praise in how they took on distance learning and virtual education in really innovative ways. So I also wrote an email to my leadership team that I was really clear, you know, MCAS is not something we focus on tremendously each year, and we're not going to do that again, just because the scores happen to be, you know, well above the state average compared to 2019, the last time MCAS was taken. It's going to be self-serving of us to make a big deal now, and we don't make a big deal other years, but I just, I want to acknowledge the hard work of staff in an incredibly challenging year last year, particularly how wonderfully they took on something they hadn't done before, which was teaching on a computer. So kudos to them, kudos to families and students for persevering through a very challenging time. We now have up and running our Bynex testing, which is a 15-minute rapid test for anyone who's symptomatic, staff member or student during the school day. We had it running last year, the state changed vendors. That's been a choppy transition for many districts, us included, but we're glad to have that. It also allows us to have the test and stay strategy for students who are close contacts who are asymptomatic. So that's great. Thanks to Robin Supranaut and all the nurses for that. We are still not at a place of implementing the pool testing. The vendors' contact for our area is no longer working at that organization. We found that out yesterday, so we were making good progress, and we're stymied a little bit. Lexington Superintendent wrote a long email about it last night. We're far from the only district, so it is frustrating. Know that our nurses are doing everything possible, but you know, until the vendor is able to, the state-appointed vendor is able to support us in that, we are limited in our control. But really glad to have the Bynex up and running, and our nurses have that ready. It was very successful last year as well. I also want to thank everyone, everyone in the community, for the adjustment to the start time. You know, if it wasn't for the pandemic, we'd be talking about, oh my God, school starts earlier and ends earlier and all those things, but it's went incredibly smoothly, and that's inclusive of, you know, transportation in challenging times, managing that, but also families, students, and staff for making that adjustment. So thank you. I know it's making a huge impact, positive impact at the region, at the secondary schools, but it meant an adjustment at the elementary. Appreciate everyone rolling with it. Our van driver recruitment, we are making some progress in that area. We had a number of people in for interviews this, nope, last week, excuse me, and you know, some difference in licensing issues to work through with the state, because there are rightfully lots of licensing rules and regulations. But I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll have significantly more van drivers than we have right now, which will ease some of the burden. We are still looking for bus drivers. We're living not quite as successful as recruitment of bus drivers, but we're doing everything possible along that dimension. but we're doing everything possible along that dimension. Our current vaccine rate at the elementary level of staff is well over 85% for all staff members of the elementary level. So we do have that information and that compares favorably to some of our other communities. As I've said before, I'm pro-vaccine. I think it's a good thing and it's keeping us safe and really happy to have those high numbers. Like many people, it's hard to see, at least the initial read on Pfizer's 5 to 11-year-old data and potential timeline for emergency youth authorization. We've already been in contact with the town health department about the potential of doing school-based clinics for families who are interested sometime when it becomes accepted, which, you know, the estimates I'm seeing are between Halloween and Veterans Day is kind of what people are anticipating. No one really knows, but I think it's, that's, that's what I'm seeing experts say. So we're already having conversations with the town about doing clinics, because we know that for some families getting to, getting to a location where there are vaccines may be a challenge. So more soon on that, as we get more information on the timeline from the FDA and CDC and Pfizer, but we are anticipating being able to offer onsite vaccines for families who are interested for their children. And still work on details of how families can come, because the kids are little and they may want their parents there with them. So working on those details, but we want to make it as accessible for families as possible. I think my last piece is just a plug. We have our wellness committee meeting again. It's co-chaired by our school nutrition director, Michael Gallo O'Connell, and our nurse manager, Robin Supernat, meets multiple times over the course of the year. It was in the newsletter last week, but it's really important. We want to have lots of voices in to think about wellness, physical wellness, but also other wellness as well. And it's, it's a group that provides recommendations for me and I bring them to school committee from time to time. They were very supportive of the move for our food service to go in-house, which I think, looking back, feels very much like the right decision. So if anyone's interested in that, you could certainly get in touch with me directly if my email comes up easier. But Debbie Westmoreland also can send that information along. And that's my update for the evening.
Thank you. On that last item, Dr. Morris, is there any specific credentials, requirements, characteristics of community members that, in order to become a member of the wellness committee?
Someone who's interested in child wellness. Yeah, there's no resumes required or anything like that. It's actually just, it's truly interest-based. And, you know, we welcome anyone who has the capacity and is willing to dedicate their time to that effort. Does meet, they try to do different times of day, but you know, we are going to do a virtual meeting, which I think hopefully opens up access for folks, because they could take time, you know, if they're at work or they're working from home. It doesn't need to be a physical meeting. And I think hopefully that provides more, again, more access for anyone interested.
Any other questions from the committee for the superintendent? Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I'm going to try to keep it quick. Thanks for all the updates related to the vaccine clinics. I was reminded as I was scheduling my own children's flu vaccines, that we can't forget about all the other vaccines that our kids are, need to stay healthy. So I was just wondering if you've been thinking at all about the success we've been having with these COVID vaccines? If there's any thought about potentially doing things like a flu vaccine in a similar way, just to help protect the health of our community?
Yeah, we actually had a conversation this morning about that. Karen, I didn't talk today, you're not a plant. But, you know, we, the timing's getting a little bit complicated on how to do that. You know, for our flu clinic, that's primarily, we do a flu shot clinic for staff that's generally run by a vendor like CVS or something like that, not our nurses, because they're in the buildings nursing, doing nursing. And also the town is really working on, you know, providing vaccine clinics like every Thursday afternoon. So capacity-wise, gets a little bit complicated wherever vendor in to vaccinate young children. So that's sort of what we're weighing. And I think we're working on it, so we're trying to see what's possible. But we do, we are going to have a flu shot clinic for staff. And, you know, based on what they're able to provide, we perhaps could open that up for, for children as well. But it's not coming directly from the town health department. It would be with, through an external organization.
Ms. Lord, did you have your hand up or was that, no? Any other questions from the committee? I'm not seeing any. Thank you for that update, Dr. Morris. And I have, next up is our, is a chairs update. And I'll try to be brief as well. This morning, I met with a group of folks, including Dr. Morris and Dr. Slaughter, as well as, and then folks from the town of Amherst to talk about budget, budget process and sort of get that, that going. So it was Andy Steinberg, who's the chair of the Finance Committee, and Lynn Griesmer, president of the town council, as well as Sean Mangano and Paul Bachmann from the town of Amherst. So we talked about a few things about, about the process for, for going into, into the upcoming year. And some of them resonate with topics that we talked about with another committee at another meeting. But one of the, some of the things that came up in there was, was really thinking through what, what adjustments or tweaks that we would like to make to the timeline and the process. And, and I think the, the line of thinking is very similar to sort of what we've been trying to, talking about at the, at the regional level. But one of the things that came up also is that, that's motivating this is that some members of the, of the current town council have expressed concern about long-term trends in our school budgets, and particularly with regard to rising costs per pupil. And that we want to find a way for our process to enable and facilitate greater public understanding and, and sort of greater open and public discussions around these concerns that have been expressed so far privately from the town council. We also talked about the suggestion that came up at another school committee meeting of our regional committee about the idea of having community forums earlier in the process. And that is something, as well as having more sort of budget primers and explainers and complete budget books to explain the budget and bring the community into our budget process at the beginning of the process, in addition to at the end, when we get to the budget hearing, which at that point is very challenging to, to affect and impact the budget development. We also talked about the, the significant impact that, that our competitive marketplace, and Mr. Demlin constantly is, is always very good at reminding us that whenever we, when we do have conversations at the school committee about budget, and we talked about bringing in our state representatives and senators to assist us with that and with regard to the charter school funding formula. I, the other, I think the only other thing related to that is that there was conversation about potentially creating a working group of elected officials to work through the understanding of budget drivers. And that's related to the first comment about town councilors having concerns about the long-term trends in the budget. So at, when we get to future agenda planning, that's a topic that, that we'll talk about. The timing for that and putting in that conversation on our Amherst School Committee, our next agenda, to talk about how we want to approach that, that establishing a working group and getting going on that, as well as budget forums and timelines. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Demlin?
Yeah, so just, what was the desired scope? Or what was the discussion about desired hopeful scope of that kind of a working group?
That was really, the desired scope was really to dig into what are the budget drivers for building our Amherst Elementary Schools budget? What are the, the constraints, opportunities? What are, what is the impact of declining enrollment, per pupil costs, all of that? I should note also that, that, you know, we, we did talk, and I think it was Dr. Morris that mentioned this, that, that, you know, if the town of Amherst is, is interested in funding a per pupil cost study, that, that's something that we'd be open to, to have that funding. But that would be the purpose of the, of the working group, is to really dig into the budget and sort of look at it both, not, not just from a current year or upcoming year planning perspective, but in terms of long-term drivers. Other questions? And as mentioned, I, this is, this is a big and meaty topic, so we will put this on a future agenda. So looking just for clarifying questions right now. Okay. And next up is school committee announcements. Does anybody from the school committee have an announcement? Ms. Lord?
Yes, I would like to welcome everyone and anyone to our school equity task force meeting tomorrow. First one of the year, yay, at 6 o'clock and it is on the district calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a plug, the policy subcommittee met yesterday evening. And we did use Board Docs for our agenda and sharing documents. So subcommittees and advisor committees are welcome to, to use that as well. Any other announcements? Not seeing any. Okay, great. So we'll move on to new and continuing business. And as I mentioned earlier, and I see that some people have joined and left, so I'll just describe briefly how we're going to go about this, this forum. And we'll start with a presentation from Dr. Morris on, on the potential 6th grade move to the middle school, very brief. And then we'll allow at least an equal amount of time after that for, for public comment and statements. Statements should be limited to three minutes each. And we ask that you raise your hand using the, if you look at the bottom of your screen, there's a, there's a little icon of a hand. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and put you in, in the, in line. And when we call on you from that line, then we'll ask you to unmute in order to speak for your three minutes. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. And as it is a forum, and with posted as such, I'm going to just start a timer when I start presenting, so that the rules of public forum in the town of Amherst now are that the public comments have to, or the public, the responses during the forum have to be at least as long as the presentation. I don't think that'll be a problem tonight. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. It's very similar information than what's been presented before, but I want to make sure I'm following the rules on that. So I will keep track and I'll start by sharing my screen. So again, this is very similar to what's been presented. So if you have been watching these meetings or for the school members, I apologize. There, there's one slide at the end, one or two slides that are a bit adjusted, but otherwise it's, it continues to be the same content. So very briefly, quite some years ago, the members of the four towns, Amherst, Leverett, Palom and Schutzbury, requested that we look at a couple of different models, 6th grade to the middle school being one, could 7 through 12 fit in one building? Still, full study was completed and a presentation was made to the school committee. And the short, relevant part of that is that 6th graders can fit within the existing middle school without building in addition or anything like that, based on declining enrollment that's happened in the district. As a follow-up to that, there were middle school, the middle school grade standard advisory board was formed. Some members of that are in this meeting tonight, so thank you for joining us. The group worked well. Right as we were hitting completion, the world changed on us a bit, but they did complete a draft report. And I think particularly noteworthy was visiting JFK Middle School in North Hampton for a tour and a conversation. We met with families, met with staff members, the then-principal who since retired walked us around. And it was just a really positive experience in terms of learning. You know, however, people left in different places, it was, it was a really powerful experience. And if we move forward, I think, and COVID restrictions relax, we'd want to continue to see other middle schools with similar demographics of our group, of our, of our schools, excuse me. So for me, the three primary considerations, one, you know, is this an unusual model that we don't think can work in Amherst? Second is space issues that we having, we're having currently, and the third is an MSBA decision. So on the first part, again, I'm going to, I'm going to go through these quite briefly, because I've presented them multiple times before. But the, it's the grade 6 through 8 middle school is the most common grade level format we have, both in the state as well as in the country. And, you know, with the last 30 years, many districts, I would say most districts have moved along that dimension. When we think about our M-SAM districts, Minority Student Achievement Districts that have similar demographics to us and similar philosophy, the vast majority of them use a 6 through 8 model. If you look at other comparison districts within our Commonwealth, the Brookline, you know, the districts we compare ourselves to frequently also use this model. And, you know, so the short story is, if the school committee moves, decides to move this way, I'm confident the educators and community can develop an engaging model, right? I don't, there's lots of models out there to view. We saw one in North Hampton, we've looked at some other ones. This is not moving into an unusual path. This is actually moving into a typical path where there's lots of great examples of 6 through 8 middle schools. And the reason many districts went that way over the last 20 or 30 years is the feeling that a two-year middle school was, was really insufficient. You know, it doesn't allow for building the relationships. It provides three trend, multiple transitions within a short period of time, 6 to 7, then 78, and then 8 to 9. So two transitions in three years during adolescence was a major concern for many educators over time, and, and they've made that decision. We got a lot of good feedback on what a model could look like on our survey. And again, I'm just going to, in an interest of time, continue to, to move forward on the presentation. We do have acute space issues, because we moved the quads and made them halvesies. We lost 12 classroom spaces at each site. And so for us, that has had many, many challenges, the loss of cafeteria spaces for student lunches, as well as other areas. We do have some art and music and technology teachers. Actually, all the technology teachers are teaching on a cart and some of the other specialists as well. That's a, that's a significant challenge implication. Instrumental music, you know, we're not teaching instrumental music to 3rd graders this year because of space. And that's a really hard thing to say, because we know that instrumental music, much like language, is one of the things that as the earlier you start it, the better off you are. We know that many families will, we get private lessons from kids are younger. The later we start the lessons, the less likely it is from an equity perspective as well, it's just in general, that our students will achieve mastery and continue in middle school and high school. But it's the, I talked multiple times or back and forth with communications, show of music teachers, and there just isn't the space for them to, to run their program this year. And that's an awful decision that we had to make. It's also incredibly challenging to find pullout spaces for, you know, students who needed it, English language learners, special education students, intervention students. And, you know, those are some of our most vulnerable learners. And while we believe in inclusion, some students do need a separate setting for learning, and we're struggling to provide all that they need. So these are the maps. Again, they've been presented before multiple times, so I'll skip over. The third aspect is the MSBA project decision. So I think we all acknowledge, me being the committee and myself, that we need to do something about our buildings. Both Fort River and Wildwood are in poor condition. They're not getting any better. More things are failing. I was over at Wildwood today, working on, so some concerns about some of the outdoor space and playground area. And so we're working with the town to try to look at that. And the numbers are, the number of problems accumulate over time. So sort of every week, our facilities department is trying to retrofit something or fix something. And at some point, that, that's going to fail. And that's why we're in the MSBA project, because then it, actually the MSBA has been incredibly blunt about that our schools are in poor condition and need to be fixed. And that's compared to many schools in Massachusetts that fall the same way. We applied for multiple enrollment options. They only approved two. So option A is 320 students, 6th grade stays in the elementary school. We stay K to 6, Fort River is replaced and or renovated. And option B is to replace or replace essentially Fort River and Wildwood, whether it's new building or add Veno to one of the, one of the existing structures and 6th grade moves. I want to be really clear, there's a binary option. The third option is we don't, we don't fix our schools, right? Without the MSBA paying half the freight, we're not going to be able to replace or repair our schools in Amherst. So there really is a forced choice here, and it is a choice. And that's what you all are considering tonight. I made a little table of the implications, you know, in terms of the 320 student option, which is a K to 6 option. It essentially means that Wildwood would stay as is for quite some time. That specials teachers likely would not have their own instructional spaces, particularly Wildwood for, until Wildwood, something happened to Wildwood to improve it. until Wildwood, something happened to Wildwood to improve it. When the project's completed, I'm not going to read all of these, but I think it's important, these are important points. Fort River would become a Comanantis only school. So it means all the students in the non-Comanantis classes, so six classes of students, grades one through six, would all transition, have to go to a different school. Because there's 320 students is basically just enough for Comanantis and maybe one more. Doesn't fulfill all those. So that means a lot of Fort River, a third of Fort River would have to leave and go to a different school. I'm not sure where they'd go if we have space at the other schools anyway. Fort River would run out of space right in several years because it grows one grade level, one class each year with the Comanantis program. And we have some financial barriers to, you know, redistricting or renting mobile classrooms. I think the last point's really important, that the aims and building blocks programs would have to move at the end of the completion. That these specialized specialized programs, there wouldn't be space for them, and those students would primarily not be in the Comanantis program. So they would have to move to either Cocker Farm or Wildwood. Option B, a 575 student option, the challenge, right, is why we're here tonight. Sixth grade program at Arms would need to be developed and implemented, and people have strong feelings both ways on that topic. Renovation, reconstruction of both schools would be in about 2026. So it means that on a positive side, that both schools could be offline, as it were, in the next couple of years. You know, we would, we would be able to do some specials and cafeterias and get those back sooner. We wouldn't involve redistricting or renting mobile classrooms. That way, the specialized specialized programs could remain at at in the same site. And that Fort River students would not have to move if they were not in part of the Comanantis program. Next steps, we're at a public forum tonight. And I know you're anticipating to vote on the next meeting on the fifth and potentially at the region on the 12th. And I described some votes to work with, you know, if if you do move this, vote to move the sixth grade, which is we'd want to work on, you know, how that works between the two districts, developing a task force to, you know, dig in on what sixth grade model we want, work with our HR department on staffing shifts, and then explore some infrastructure improvements we've been thinking about. Anyway, a maker space at this building has been talked about, and we have some thoughts about funding that, wayfinding signage, you know, in terms of where sixth graders would be situated. Those types of things. So here's my recommendation, which I have yet to make tonight. So my recommendation to you is twofold. One is a decision, and the second part is a timeline. So my recommendation is that you vote on this move on at your next meeting, that sixth grade would move to the middle school. You know, for me, you know, the MSBA project booms very large. I can't think of Wildwood going into the 2030s, right? They got into the MSBA program in 2013. So to wait 20 years to get to have a major improvement at Wildwood is is just something that, to me, is unacceptable. It's also unacceptable to pull Comanantis, non-Comanantis students and special ed programs out of the school. I think just ethically, it's not something I'm very comfortable with that. The current space situation is really challenging in our schools. I'm in them routinely, and it's very, very tight and does have implications of our instruction. And I do believe there can be potential benefits. I heard some of the public comment about sixth graders do better here or there. And I think, you know, the really the question why many districts moved it is what's better over the lifetime of the school, right? And so any transition year in adolescence is very challenging, whether that be sixth grade or seventh grade. But what can we provide for students in terms of a holistic education? And I think that could be argued either way, but I'm not convinced that one way is far exceeds the other. I think the other factors really contribute greatly here. And I think it can be exciting. I mean, I'll just say, on a personal level, thinking about our brand new sixth grade program, what we could do, I would love to integrate world language much sooner than we typically do. I'd love to think about a maker space that we have in our plans that we're able to implement for sixth grade. So I see a lot of advantages. I know others have different points of view on that, and I want to respect those. But I think combined with all three of the options, the potential benefits academically and for our students, the space situation we have now and the building project. For me, that's why I'm making that recommendation. For the timeline, I'm recommending for 20, this to happen, not next fall, but the fall after. You know, what I'm realizing, the first two bullet points are connected there. I go back to what I said in public during superintendent update, excuse me, it's incredibly challenging to be working and teaching during a pandemic. And I think our capacity collectively to work on major projects in the same way we would if it wasn't a pandemic is more limited. And so having two summers is going to be really beneficial. I go back to, and I'm going to date myself a little bit here. But when I was a principal at Cocker Farm and Mark's Meadow School closed, and we transitioned, we had two summers to do that work. At the time, we weren't sure we needed the two summers. I will tell you right now, we needed the two summers as a principal, making that transition, having that much that much change happen. And I think this change is of a similar magnitude. Some might argue that point, but for me, it's it's in that same ballpark. And so having this summer and then the following summer to finalize changes is really important. Some of the feedback was really helpful that I got. I know it was a lot of feedback received. Some was about specialized programs and making, making sure that the, you know, we're thinking through all the implications for every single student, and I think more time would really be beneficial for us in doing that. And on a positive front, yeah, in my opinion, is that we had an unanticipated reduction in classrooms needed at Wildwood. We had two instead of three kindergartens. And that means the space needs at Wildwood are still there, but they're slightly less acute than they would be if we had our anticipated number of classes. So I think we can, we can this is maybe the wrong verb, but hobble through from an infrastructure perspective, one more year of being really tight to have a better transition for students and staff in in the fall of 23. So that's where I am. I'm going to look at my time to make sure. So I wasn't quite at 10 minutes. I was at 13 minutes. My apologies. But I'm going to stop presenting. The slides are on the board docs. So if anyone's following along and you want to go back to something that's on here, it's on on our board docs, public site. And I think at this point, we can open it up for the public forum unless there's, I don't know if you wanted questions from the committee first or the public forum first, Ms. McDonald.
Um, I think if I, well, actually, I'll just look, I'll just scan this committee first to see if anybody has burning questions. I think there's not a lot of new information, Mr. Dem. And but I will also note, we will keep the public forum open for at least 15 minutes. I think that's a nice round number. So as as long as it takes us to get through everybody who would like to speak, and if it's shorter than 15 minutes, then we'll, we'll wait until that that time. So Mr. Demly.
Yeah, real quick. So on the timeline recommendation, Dr. Morris, so I don't think anybody would dispute the general notion that more planning is better. And you make a compelling argument for that, but you know, for our decision, we need to balance the benefit of that against the cost of of what you described as as muddling through. And, you know, when we first had this topic introduced to us, the the notion of the impact of the space crunch on Fort River and Wildwood was a theoretical, you know, back in the spring. So now we have a few weeks of lived experience. And so what what I feel like I need in advance of our vote is is a better understanding of exactly what that that impact has been and how staff and administration is is handling it and what they they feel like the the projected impact is going to be. Because I obviously don't have that, and I'm not in the buildings, and I'm not in a position to have that. But I feel like I need that. For the cost benefit weighing, I feel like I need that sort of bit of of that that data point. Yeah, I'll just respond briefly. I'll see Maylene has a quick logistical comment, our recorder, so I want to make sure that I don't, we don't skip her. But I think this is, this is a team decision. We talked about it with building principals as well. And I think we came to the conclusion that, given the variables that we had, that we felt like it was wise, and I don't want to, you know, it's being used. It's not a line about the pandemic. I mean, it's very real that our capacity to think about shifts and major changes beyond what we're currently doing and shifting, just to provide instruction, the health and safety pieces, the time change, you know, is more limited. And I think, you know, maybe at the next meeting, I'd be happy to ask principals to come and and share their perspective. I mean, the Wildwood having one less classroom, actually, it's not a small deal. It really contributed to some really helpful space pieces. It's still tight. At Fort River, Principal Hernandez came in and did some creative things with space, again, that we hadn't really thought of last last spring and has kind of not found space, but found creative configuration that helped. It'll get tighter next year because they will have one more section at Fort River. But I think when we, when we thought about through as a team, we thought about the pluses and minuses, and we sort of landed that that timing made sense. You know, we weren't comfortable going another year beyond that with the space needs. But, you know, again, I'm happy to invite them next week, so they, or two weeks from now, so they can speak about their experiences directly.
And so any other questions? From the committee? Seeing them. Um, Maylene?
Hi, I just wanted to note that board docs does have a timer function, which I will be using. So if you are following the meeting on the scoreboard where you can see the agenda items being highlighted, when I put in the three-minute timer, it's going to appear on that scoreboard and start to count down. The one thing to note is that the timer will not have a audible noise to let you know when it's run out. So I'm going to leave it to Chair McDonald to keep an eye on that and just let people know when their three minutes has run out.
Thank you. I will, I will keep an eye on that, and I will note when we reach the three-minute mark. Okay, so just as a reminder, the little hand at the bottom of your your screen is what you click to raise your hand in order to speak, and that will put you in line. And we will call in people in the order in which they appear in the queue. There's, I've seized that there's some comments and questions that have been coming in and chat. We'll go through the the speakers first, and then while we're, if there's a pause at that point, then we'll go to the the questions in the chat. And so first up is Anastasia Ordonas.
Hello, good evening. My name's Anastasia Ordonas, and I'm a resident of Amherst. I'm also the parent of a seventh grader in the regional middle school and the fifth grader at Fort River. I'm speaking today because I strongly support the moving of the sixth grade to the middle school. This move makes sense to me from an educational perspective. For years, I've heard middle school families complain about how much their children struggle to keep up in school because it's only a two-year grade span. Two years is just not enough time for students to work on their critical reading and writing skills, to strengthen their math skills, and to make the transition from minimal homework in elementary school, which we've seen, you know, for various reasons over the past few years, to the very stringent homework demands of high school. Sixth grade teachers in elementary school have to twist seventh and eighth grade curricula into a form that's usable in the elementary school setting. And information about each student's progress in sixth grade is lost by the time they get to seventh grade. In other words, there's little to no continuity once students change schools. I've also heard from parents who say they don't feel like they're a part of the middle school community because by the time they get to know a few of the parents and kids, middle school's over and everyone's moved on to high school. This is a difficult developmental period for young adolescents, and they could use the expanded time in school to form stronger social connections with their teachers and school community. Also, sixth graders currently don't get to participate in the student clubs and athletics that middle schoolers do, missing out on the camaraderie and support that comes from that kind of extracurricular participation, unless their families can pay for private after-school activities. Finally, and this is an important point, I think, for me and a lot of other parents, we know that our town cannot afford to build a new school building without moving the sixth grade to the middle school. This is extremely important. We've been waiting 18 years to get a new school to replace our two failing elementary school buildings. To me, this is an educational and an equity issue. Many of our public school children aren't learning in healthy school environments, and we can do something about that now. So let's take this necessary next step and do something about it. I've heard from teachers and long-term community members in Amherst who say that moving the sixth grade to the middle school has come up for many years in public discussion, and we keep kicking the can down the road over and over because we don't want to make that change happen. I hope the school committee is going to vote on October 5th to move the sixth grade to the middle school on the timeline recommended by the superintendent and our principals and educators, but that we not delay this decision any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Cora Fernandez Anderson.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I'm the mother of a third grader and a fifth grader at Fort River. And I want to say that I do support the move of the sixth grade because it needs to be done for the new building, and so that both Wildwood and Fort River can be addressed. However, I would really like this school committee to think about the timing very carefully and follow what Superintendent Mike Morris have just expressed, that the, it will be a better way of planning and think through what are we offering, you know, the that no sixth graders to delay it to 2023 instead of like 2022. I believe, you know, that fifth graders have lost already like a year and a little bit more of in-person schooling, and many of them, and I've talked to other fifth grade families, feel that their children are not either, you know, academically or emotionally ready for that transition for next year, and they need the more comfortable and safe space of one more year in their elementary school to get ready for that transition. So I would like also to ask the school committee, what what are your positions currently on the timing? Because I have heard in the previous meetings in general that there's large support for moving it the sixth grade, and I also heard in the community, there's large support, but like, what what are your thoughts about the timing? Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next one, I'll just say at this, right now, we're we're here to listen. And we'll note the questions. I think the the school committee at our October 5th meeting is when when school committee members will have the opportunity to share their own, each of our own perspectives and weigh in in that discussion before we come to a vote. If there's any factual or clarifying questions, obviously, we'll answer those this evening. And next up is Margaret Sawyer.
Hi. I am a mother of a student at Fort River. He is in fifth grade, which is why I'm here weighing in. So it's a little self-interested, but also very genuine. I I want to speak that our family is absolutely in favor of the sixth grade moving to the middle school. We think it's necessary. And I'm also very strongly in favor of the timeline that Superintendent Morris has proposed. We were very, very concerned that an effort to do this any faster, to do the move in the self-interested way, but also thinking more globally, to do it for next year would be very rushed. This is already a complicated year. We're already off to a difficult start with COVID still quite present in our lives, and it seems like there's just not enough time to get the ready for the middle school move and at the same time prepare the students. I was lucky to be part of planning the Comanantis project. That was really beautiful, and the school district did a great job taking the necessary time to move. Right now, there's only nine months to be able to make this move if we did it for next fall, once after it's voted upon. It doesn't seem like that's enough time. At the same time, if the space needs are so overwhelming that this move really has to happen in 2022, I want to say that I would support some kind of a transitional year for my son's class of moving to the middle school building, but without a lot of changes to the curriculum and staffing, if that were needed for the space. Maybe they could be just sort of lifted into the middle school for that one year while more planning is done to make it good. And finally, I just want to say that you know, we moved here just as my son started kindergarten. I don't know that much about the middle school, but I've been hearing a lot of fairly negative stories and reading the responses to the survey of this, the superintendent sent out. There was a lot of reports of teachers being unhappy teaching there, students experience that it was not a trustworthy place to be. I'm alarmed to hear today that it was hard for student records to, you know, teachers to get a sense of the students from the sixth grade teachers. So I wonder if the middle school itself doesn't need a little attention and a little extra care from the school board and the and the committee before, as this transition prepares. I wonder if it might be possible to spend some time just kind of loving on the middle school to get it ready for the sixth grade to get there. It seems like the whole place might need a little attention. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Muller.
Hi, my name is Laura Muller. I'm a resident of Amherst and parent of a Wildwood student who actually has a question, which I'll ask in a moment. Dr. Morris, you spoke of the time that the district needs to plan this transition because of the pandemic, but you're neglecting the fact that children have had a lot of transitions in this time. My question is about both of those transitions. The first question is from our daughter, who is a Wildwood fourth grader, who was upset upon hearing that she might move to the middle school with the sixth graders. Her question was, "I was looking forward to being the oldest at Wildwood. There are many privileges and responsibilities that go with being the oldest kids in the school. What are they going to do so I get to do some of that stuff?" So that's from my fourth grader. My question is that I want to be clear. You are asking Amherst students to go through two major transitions in two years. One, in which the Amherst Elementary School students form community at the middle school, and then a second one, when the other students from Leverett, Pelham, and Chutesbury, with different demographics than our schools, need to be integrated into the plan. Will you explain your plans for forming community at both of these major transitions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jacob Mayfield. I believe you're still muted. We can't hear you. You might be able to switch over to phone. We can't hear you.
Yeah, he just, if he's still hearing. He was not muted. He did unmute. It just must be something with the connection to his microphone, but, but the mute button is off on. Maybe everyone can see that, but I know as the host, I can see that. So it was unmuted. It just wasn't, his voice wasn't connecting to whatever device it was on.
Okay. Why don't we continue on? When, well, there's two more folks in the queue, and we'll go through those, and then Mr. Mayfield will come back to you and see if you've been able to troubleshoot your audio. So next up is, oh. Nope, we can't hear you. So we'll move on to Ms., not sure, H. Hannah.
Hi, that's me, Howard Hannah. I'm, I'm the father of a fifth grader at, at Fort River and a third grader at Fort River. And so I want to say that I've, I reviewed the presentation slides. I looked at the, the data from the facilities use stuff, and it seems to me that we've, that a decision is already being pushed, essentially a decision to move the sixth graders to the middle school, as if there is no other options. Originally, that plan was for, to move them as quickly as possible. I, I'm glad to hear that that has changed now that it's not going to be as quick a move. But in reading the, the survey responses, I think many parents are still concerned with the, the, the community essentially dealing with COVID, the school recovering from a broken 2020 school year, and the alternating start end times and, and more. And I think there are questions on, wait. I think the parent question have additional questions on planning, on the middle school leadership, on this being too rushed, and common issues of middle school stuff, such as younger children being in middle school, and, and the issues being like regarding behavior, drugs, vaping, et cetera. So I've reviewed that survey data, and based on the final question there, question 11, where it says like, is there any other information you'd like to share? There's nearly half of the survey respondents were against or very concerned about the move to middle school. And I think that's something to take into account because we don't see a lot of that right now in this, in, in this group meeting. But according to the survey, question 11, it was close to half of the people being concerned or against. Personally, I think we need to consider the timing, and right now, I don't think it's terribly well-planned. I think a move to the middle school is necessary. So I want to be clear about that. I think the move is necessary. I'd like the school committee to review the concerns raised by parents regarding middle school leadership, behavior, the vaping, drug use, and other concerns that were presented before, before setting a date, before setting the date for the move to 2023. So I, I believe we can make the move. I think we can do a good job at moving the sixth graders to middle school. I think we need to just slow it down a little bit and see a little bit better planning in place. And I believe the best interest of the students is to provide a slow, deliberate, and well-planned move. So I want to thank everybody who's here tonight, thank the school committee, and thank Superintendent Morris for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Christiane Healy.
Hello, I'm Christiane Healy. I'm the mother of a fifth grader and a fourth grader at, at Fort River. And, and for the, the reasons already outlined by the first three folks offering public comment, I'm, I'm very much in support of the move off sixth grade to the middle school. But really, I admit that I was alarmed about the move initially. At least what I heard was proposed for next fall, and that I was alarmed. And so I appreciate that now, at least in Doctor Morris's recommendation, it was fall '23. And so I am very much in support, as long as you don't do it next year, as long as you wait until fall '23. And basically means my, my son won't make the move. He'll be there in sixth grade at Fort River, and my daughter will already start, will spend her sixth grade at the middle school. And I also really like what Margaret pointed out, that maybe some of the concerns that parents have of their sixth grader moving to middle school are related to issues at the middle school. And perhaps it just, yeah, perhaps the middle school will actually benefit from a really thoughtful rethinking of the sixth grade at the middle school and whether they really are problems. Is it just something that, that parents sort of think hearsay? Or are they truly issues that, that we as a community should address, that the school committee should take a closer look at? So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayfield, are you connected to sound?
According, do I have sound now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Don't know what happened there, but thank you for the chance to speak and for giving me a second chance to speak as well. I'd like to, to make a request, a point, and then ask for a point of clarification. First, a request. I have a second grader and a fifth grader at Wildwood. We were excited for an opportunity to complete a survey and completely missed the survey because the link to the survey was buried in a newsletter. I'd like to request that the surveys go out as a separate email, like all of the other Survey Monkey surveys, surveys that we get. I think it's especially important that parents of fifth graders have an opportunity to make their voice heard about a move that would directly affect them. A point, I want to make sure that it's clear that sixth graders cannot be vaccinated for COVID right now. So moving sixth, sixth graders to the middle school would mean putting them in an environment where they are potentially not vaccinated, whereas the rest of the school would be vaccinated. So I applaud the idea of delaying until 2023 for that potential public health reason alone. I think it would be too soon to assume that we can all have our kids vaccinated by then. And finally, a point of clarification. If the option A and option B for school construction are binary options, does moving the sixth grade to the middle school exclude the possibility of option A? That's unclear to me. It makes it look from the slide like that would remove that as a possibility. And if that's the case, shouldn't there be a discussion about option A versus option B before a discussion about moving to the middle school? Thank you.
Will Snyder.
Hey, Will, I think you're muted. I apologize, but Mr. Snyder had it to be let back into the meeting.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Well, I'm a, a parent of a, a fourth grader who will be definitely part of this transition. But I guess my, my concern is for the longer run, too. I'd, I'd really support a move to, of the sixth grade to the middle school. I, I kind of like the idea, especially of, of languages, for example, being offered a year earlier. That's really important. But I'd really only support it if all the elementary schools were coming in together. It really doesn't make sense to me to have two waves of, of young people coming in into the middle school, year upon year. This is a, a time, middle school is a, a time when community building is really important, and it seems like a huge amount of effort would have to go into, into that work. I'm not sure that it would really be the best way to prepare our kids for, for high school and beyond. Thanks.
Thank you. I saw a hand up and then it went down, but I think, oh.
Tony Cunningham. Hello, thank you. I recognize that moving the Amherst sixth grade to the middle school is the linchpin to the building project addressing both Wildwood and Fort River. And in theory, I support it for that reason and definitely prefer the longer timeline. I, I think 2022 is, is far too soon. But if I understand it correctly, there is no plan to change the region to be a grade six through 12 school district, and that it's likely that Leverett, Chutesbury, and Pelham would not be moving their sixth grade at the same time that Amherst would. I believe this means the Amherst sixth graders at the middle school would still be part of the elementary school district. So does that mean the regional middle school would remain a grade seven through eight school? And are there any other middle schools in a regional school district that you're aware of, where only some of the towns of the region send their children to the middle school and a grade remains part of the elementary district? And can you talk a little bit about what the key impacts or limitations you see to the sixth grade remaining part of the elementary, elementary district? Thank you.
I think there's, there's a couple of questions, and actually, maybe the question in the chat is also from one of the speakers, but the question, I think the clarification on the option A or B and from the MSBA project perspective. So Dr. Morris, I don't know if you're able to provide some of that clarification on?
Yeah, I was going to run down. I wrote a couple notes. I'm not sure I can address everybody's questions, but I think the, there's a bunch that I think I can, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So on that one, option A, which is the 320-student option, is predefined as a K to six option. And option two, which is 575 students, is predefined by MSBA as a K to five option. There's no mixing or matching. It, it is a binary choice that way. So if sixth grade stays, that defines the building project as only K to six, 320 students. And if sixth grade goes, it defines the project as K to five, 575 students only. So it is a binary choice that way, and the grade level does, will be the determining factor on that, that set of choices. Can I just, is it okay to just keep rolling? Because I've, I've got a number of responses. So I think to Chutesbury, Leverett, and Pelham, I can't make a decision for Leverett and Pelham to join. It's complicated. They're members of another district. For Pelham, it's a little bit easier because they are members of our district. Their teachers are part of the same bargaining unit as the Amherst and regional teachers. That's not true for Chutesbury and Leverett. So it's layers of complication for them to think about. So Pelham, I can speak to a little bit. I won't at this meeting because it's an Amherst School Committee meeting, but I can at the Pelham School Committee because I sit on that. I have no official role with Leverett and Chutesbury Elementary Schools. So I can't really comment much on them, except that I think they're interested in hearing what happens. But I think that's as far as, you know, what we hear from Chutesbury and Leverett and the complications of them potentially sending their sixth grader from a bureaucratic and governmental and governance perspective are quite complex. I do want to note that Amherst students comprise about 79 or 80% of the students of the region. So when we think about perhaps Amherst-only students moving in sixth grade, it's about 80% of the students who would be coming. So it is a lion's share. I think it's also worth noting that there was a good question about other districts. So actually, my colleague in Chutesbury and Leverett, my close colleague, who's a superintendent there, has some other districts that she, she's five towns, four districts. And she is this exact scenario with one of her districts where they send students to a sending middle school, that's a sixth-grade middle school, and they send them in seventh grade, much in the same way that potentially some of the other towns would have. They figured out a model that works. It does involve a little bit of collaboration that way, but they found it to be a successful model and hasn't really pushed them to send their sixth graders right now to the middle school in that particular community. Again, another very similar model where it's a small town, you know, potentially making a choice to a larger middle school where they would be in the minority of students from their member town. So there are other models out there that have been worked on in our area with people, frankly, I speak with on a routine basis. So I do feel like we have models to go from. There was a comment about separate emails. You know, we tried to address this in a separate email last night, actually, that I know some people would like us to send more emails, but the vast majority of people are quite bothered with the number of emails we send and really have asked us to consolidate into a newsletter. So it's predictable, reliable. You know, on Friday afternoon, you're going to get a newsletter and all the details are in there. It's, it's a hard balance. I get it. But, you know, other than health and safety or things that are building specific, like a principal search at a school, we're going to try to stick to where the feedback we're getting, which is that people are telling us it's hard to keep track of the number of emails we've sent over the past few years. In terms of sixth grade, I think, you know, the model, I know there was a comment, could it be, I don't know if I got the wording right, but almost like a satellite of the elementary schools that's plopped into the middle school. That's something we got a lot of feedback on the survey on. And if you do move, the school committee does move forward with this. We want to get a lot of different feedback. There are sixth-grade middle schools where sixth grade does operate more independently from the seventh and eighth-grade middle school. There are middle schools where the six through eight operates as one unit. And I talked to a couple people where it started as a satellite and then over time, woven into a more integrated model. And I actually tend to personally find that a bit attractive, that it's a gradual effort. It's not necessarily everything is done in year one. It, it works in over time. So I think, I think it's a really interesting idea, and if we do move forward, it's something we want to explore about what are the places where there might be integration? You know, maybe it's world language teachers, other specials, arts, music, that kind of thing. And then over time, perhaps there's more integration, perhaps sixth grade stays more as a separate entity. I don't have a solution to that, but I do think it's worth talking about and coming to some conclusion about, you know, I know sixth-grade teachers have been in touch with me a lot, and I think they're, they're very interested in that if the transition occurs and maintaining some identity as sixth grade that is distinct from middle school for a lot of the reasons we heard tonight. And I think that all should be considered. And it, on the flip side, the seventh and eighth-grade teachers often say how challenging it is to have students in a two-year environment where it's harder to build those relationships, and they want, you know, more students in the building that way. So it's, you know, there, there's some real challenge there. I think, you know, in terms of the transitions in multiple years, you know, my personal belief is making a transition from six to seven and then eight to nine is a lot of transitions within a short amount of time for this age group. So I think, you know, depends how you define transitions, and, and I get that that is something that people, folks may disagree on. But it's certainly the case that when we were in Northampton, one of the things that was really interesting, speaking to families, was the connection to the school over three years and how that, that feels different to our wonderful PGO at the middle school. But it's hard by the time the PGO folks get, understand the school more, they're transitioning to the next group of people coming on, and it does lack that consistency that you'd want to have. And it does lack that consistency that you'd want to have. So I want to acknowledge that point as being real and also that I think this complex set of factors here about what transitions occur and how to do them well. But I do think it's really important to come back to the fact that 80% of students in the region come from Amherst. So when we think about other students coming in, it's not much different from at Wildwood where the transancy rate, you know, is can be upwards of 15 or 20% on a yearly basis. Just that's our school with the most transancy year to year. And somehow our students at Wildwood do really well. There's one other point I want to make is I think there's a lot of very legitimate concerns about what the transition would look like. And I referenced it before, and I didn't think about it till people were saying it. But I remember when Mark's Meadow was closing. I remember those meetings, you know, frankly, that had many, many people's passions. Understandably enough, they loved that school there. And there were a lot of those same concerns about going to Wildwood, going to Crocker Farm, going to Fort River. Because Mark's Meadow at that point was our small school, considerably smaller than the other schools. It was under 200 students. And they got there to the other schools, and now those are the schools that people love, that people don't think about in the same way. And so I do think, you know, absolutely agree that we want to put a lot of energy and resources towards the middle school. I spoke a little bit about repairing. This came back from a couple, a report a while back about building a maker space and doing some wave finding. We've put a lot of resources into painting the front hallway and sprucing up how it looks. And I do think it needs more attention. I completely agree with that. But also, I think, you know, kids are resilient, and we would support them in this transition. This involves counselors and teachers and folks they know and love who'd be working with them. So I don't want to minimize those concerns, but they really were reminiscent of the concerns I remember hearing 11 years ago or 12 years ago when we were talking about closing an elementary school. And I wasn't in this role. I was, you know, perhaps fortunately, a principal at that point and hearing the public comments and knowing that myself, as principal of Crocker Farm, was going to welcome those students that came from different schools. We worked on that transition over two summers. And, you know, I'm not saying it didn't have some impact on students. Certainly, it did. But I think, looking back, we made that transition well for students. And I do believe that we have the capacity with the principals we have, with the leadership we have, to make this transition well, too, if it's where the school committee chooses to go. So sorry to wrap all that up into a long statement, but I just want to respond to a number of the very important comments that I heard tonight.
Thank you, that was helpful. I was wondering if it would be helpful to also provide a little bit more clarity or definition around what do we mean by integration into the middle school model? Because I think that particularly for families that haven't yet had a student go through the current program at arms may not fully understand what that means. I certainly didn't before my kids went there. So it's not like a high school model where kids are mixed up in courses and electives. And I, so I think, and I see we have at least one teacher from the middle school here. So I'm wondering if you could spend a couple of minutes and just explain what that means when we're talking about integration into a middle school model.
Yeah, so doing the research for the Great Standard Advisory Group, there's sort of two predominant models for sixth through eighth middle school. One involves the sixth graders having some level of distinct program. When we visited Northampton, there was a little bit hybrid, but they had different electives than the seventh and eighth grades. They had, they weren't in joint classes together, with the exception of some students who may want to accelerate in math if they have that option, things like that, but, and music. But the sixth grade really maintained, frankly, what a lot of our sixth grade teachers and programming is right now. So at the elementary level and most of our sixth grades and all of them in Amherst, there's some degree of kids switching classes. So we don't necessarily have four teachers in a grade level because our classrooms, our schools have two or three. So a team student may have one teacher for literacy and social studies and another teacher for math and science. And so that's some sixth grade middle schools maintain that kind of model for their sixth grade year before the full transition to a team model in seventh grade, which is most typically in our middle school follows this. One teacher for math, one teacher for social studies, one teacher for science, and one teacher for whatever the one I forgot of, the core, for core, I apologize. So there are ways where sixth grade can be distinctly different and maintain what a lot of our sixth grade look like right now with fewer teachers and fewer changing classes. Some middle schools have a full integration where sixth grade, the schedule is no different than seventh and eighth. They have that one teacher per content area model. And so, you know, that's again, if you move forward, this is where we want to hear from the community, hear from staff members about what makes sense. What do we want to choose for our sixth grade model if indeed the students are in the middle school? But the team model that you hear about has one core teacher from all the core content areas as well as special ed and ELL teacher attached, and they work as a unit. Another model, again, could be two teachers working in a smaller unit with a smaller number of students across multiple content areas. And again, that's where we're open to feedback, you know, and looking for the community of staff members as well as larger community of families and students to weigh in.
Thank you. I think there's a question in the chat that I think we've answered already, but it's possible that it was after or before the individual joined us. So talking about the coming, the impact of going to, with option A on the building project where it, Fort River is a 320-student K through six program, and that you had mentioned that it would become exclusively Comenantes. Can you describe that again?
Absolutely, yeah. So, you know, this is, it's a very awkward conversation because I think our families at Fort River choose Comenantes or choose to not be in the Comenantes program for all sorts of good reasons. And, you know, for some students, and this is a particular concern of mine, for English-speaking students who come in in second or third grade, they're placed in the non-Comenantes class, right? The monolingual English-speaking English instruction class. So they don't really even make a choice. But with the MSBA-defined numbers that they gave us, we really would only have space for the Comenante students in the size school that is approved if we stay in a K to six. It creates many, many problems. So one of them is what do we do with students who are not in that program? How are they distributed to different schools? And it creates more space problems, especially with Wildwood being in the condition it's in. I'll be honest, I don't have a great plan for how to fit more students in Wildwood right now with the quads gone. I'm not interested in resetting up quads. I think we've learned a lot. And I'd love to say that, you know, the COVID piece will be done long before this is. You know, more I read, the more it could be endemic. And, you know, ventilation was always important. And the fact is, our classrooms are better ventilated now than they ever were before, and it's hard to go back from that and put up faux walls. So it creates lots of problems of where students go, where they would be situated, that don't have easy solutions. And, you know, I feel bad saying that about the students who are in, receiving monolingual English instruction in Fort River and also for the specialized programs. Think about some of our most vulnerable kids who could no longer stay at Fort River School. And where would they land? And those students need distinct spaces to support their academic and social development as well. So it's, there's not great options for how to do that with a 320-student school. The other option is to just disband Comenantes, but I think we've got a commitment. I know we have a commitment to that program and those students to disband it. What would that do for their education as well? So it's, you know, it would be pitting side against side in all sorts of ways where there are no winners, in my opinion.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised for the public forum. I'll give it a quick minute in case anybody has, would like to speak. And if not, we're well beyond the 15 minutes minimum. So if there are no more comments, then we will move on. I'll give it a quick minute. Not seeing any. So with that, we will now end our public forum on this sixth grade to middle school decision. As I mentioned during the public comment, we, folks are welcome to continue sending us email. We received a high volume. There was a very large amount of comment in our public comment, but we've also received additional email that wasn't included in the public comments. So please continue to share your feedback and questions. We are reading all of them. And we'll have additional public comment, of course, on our October 5th meeting. So with that, I thank everybody for joining us this evening. Moving on to our next item is, in our regular school committee meeting, is Superintendent Goals Guidance. And attached to that item in the agenda is a document that may look familiar since all of us are on another committee, and we had a very similar document. But this is also very similar to the document that we used last year. So Mr. Demling and I, as vice chair and chair, sort of pulled, drafted this to at least start our conversation. And our objective for this conversation right now is to provide guidance to Dr. Morris for establishing his goals for this school year. That for folks watching at home and paying attention. And just as a reminder, we set the goals for the superintendent at the beginning of the school year. And then at the end of the school year, the evaluation of the superintendent is driven by those goals. And so we'll evaluate the progress on those goals. And so tonight is, our goal is to provide guidance for Dr. Morris in building those goals. So these are not the goals themselves. This is more sort of a statement of what we would like to see either as goals or continued work. So, and again, this is just a draft. This is to start the conversation. And the first page just recaps the goals that we had for Amherst as well as the region for the prior year. And so those are just there as reference to say is sort of what, what, what did we ask the superintendent to work on over the last school year? The second page goes into sort of what we had as overarching guiding principles in establishing the goals. And those, we didn't really change or revise from a year ago. So, you know, our hope is that wherever it's feasible to align our goals across the three districts so that the total effort is manageable and achievable within a single school year. Again, given sort of the tremendous focus and work and unpredictability that continuing to be in a pandemic year brings on that. The other thing, too, as a guiding principle, is that not all of our top priorities or projects need to be defined as an individual or distinct goal every year. So the example that we used last year was, of course, the expectation, performance expectation within the scope of responsibilities of a superintendent is to manage the budget and in a fiscally responsible way. That doesn't necessarily mean that we need to write a goal for that particular year to restate sort of the job responsibilities. So, I don't know. I've been chatting, doing all the talking. Mr. Demling, did you want to add anything before we go into sort of the?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well. I think a couple of other, just practical considerations that we were thinking about is how many goals do we want to add on? We've had some, I think, good progress working with other, our other committees to consolidate where we can and overlap out of acknowledgement that Dr. Morris works for three districts. And so trying to do that and also trying to, you know, define, find where the line is between what is a major project that we want to elevate to a goal versus, you know, there are values that we, that we expect, like the budget, to continue to have attention. But there's also, you know, individual projects as well that are time-bound. But they may not rise to the level of the goal. So it's, there's no exact science to this. But, so I think part of the value is just us sort of talking through how each of these are described and what, because ultimately, it's just a use, it's a tool to hone attention and effort on the superintendent's part and our collaboration with them. So it's really kind of up to us how we want to craft it.
I won't read all of the items that are written in there because I think we can read on our own. But what, obviously, the biggest, big one that we think, you know, we've been spending a lot of time already talking about it, but the sixth grade move, our potential move. So depending, regardless of which way the vote goes, because if we vote not to move the sixth grade, then we will have some tremendous considerations in terms of developing a model and with our significant space constraints. The early education, continuing that work, and budget planning and communication, collaborating with us on developing new approaches, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and focusing on, continuing to implement the anti-racism curriculum and with a focus on evaluating the program and reporting back, and the elementary school building project. So those were the sort of five that, as a starting point, elevated up to goals perspective. And then the themes sort of continue on to the third page. Any thoughts, ads? Comments, Ms. Spitzer?
Thanks, I'm going to apologize if I've got some background noise. It has to be a guarantee that any time I want to speak, because that's the case. So thank you for pulling this together. And so I, we're not looking for specific goals tonight. I just want to clarify, like, we're looking more to generate a reaction to the themes and the values as presented. Is that correct?
Yeah, so as we would envision this process, this, tonight is a discussion of what we, what we would like to see in the goals. And then at our next meeting is when we'll look at a draft of goals that typically Dr. Morris will sort of take our input and turn them into those goals for us to consider at our next meeting. So this is more sort of stating our expectations.
Great. So I totally agree. I am on board. I think having alignment across the districts is a great goal. And so if that means that maybe that one of my pet goals or the thing that I feel particularly strongly about or the Amherst School Committee in particular feels strong about, like, I would prioritize streamlining it over making sure that that happens. I guess I'm going to just share what I feel like might be missing. And I'm not saying that these need to go on, but things that, as I'm reading this, I don't see mentioned, but I believe are values of our community. And maybe they're so obvious that they're not included because, I don't know. I'm sorry, my screen just changed. So, so don't take this as, take this only as like offering some suggestions on things that we might consider adding, not that they necessarily need to be added. So I feel like we've heard a lot of community feedback about responding to the climate crisis. And I know that that is something that is a town-wide effort. So potentially, you know, maybe doesn't need to rise to the level of being on the goals, but I think it could rise to the level of being one of our values and something that we might specifically add to our values around. And I could see it intersecting in some ways with increasing outdoor education, engagement with the environment, engagement with like the garden projects. Like, I don't think it has to be, you know, just technical solutions to reducing our carbon footprint. I think it could also be broader in terms of raising students' awareness. And I think we're doing a lot of that work now. So that's why I'm saying, I think just calling it out as a value and a priority might be worthy of doing it. I, I'm also, and this kind of intersects with the conversation we're having and a concern I have about, what I'm hearing is that unfortunately, because of a lot of the changes we've made due to COVID, we've lost potentially some of the arts education in terms of, and also related to budget cuts. I think we're still doing a great job, but it worries me that like third grade, third graders may not be having access to music, instrumental music next year in the way that we have in the past. So I could see that as either, you know, maybe specifically planning about how to kind of address that gap for some of our kids or how to try to use the arts in a way to help, you know, as, I think, I think Ms. Lord has mentioned this in the past, you know, arts as a way of healing, you know, some of the trauma related to COVID. It's something else that I did just call out. And then also, we talk about wellness. And I think this is broad enough, but I would just call it, like, I could see integrating kind of like physical, like movement and, you know, in there. And I think this is broad enough, but I would just call it like I could see integrating kind of like physical, like movement and, you know, in there a little bit. We call out social, emotional, and they're clearly connected very strongly to you. Like your physical well being is connected to your mental health. It's all it's all interconnected, but maybe just calling that out specifically. And then I guess the final thing is, if there were one thing, and I don't think it's unimportant, but I think I feel frustrated in our inability to actually move the needle on this a bit is is the early education piece. So I think it's really important as a mother with three small kids who have struggled to find early education options. If I think if if the superintendent's feeling like that's not something where we actually have the ability to have much of an impact, then I would be in favor of potentially de-emphasizing that in in the future. So those are my reactions to this. Thanks for pulling it together.
Sorry, couldn't find my unmute button. Dr. Morris?
If it's okay to respond to a couple of things Ms. Spitzer said, so I think on the environmental and climate justice piece, I think you make a really compelling point. And and I think here's where I struggle. So not that you need to be the holder of my struggles, but but I think it's worth worth mentioning because I think it's where we struggle is. All right, so we know we're in a building project. We know the outcome of the building project, whatever it is, will be incredibly more efficient than what we have now. What we have now is a really inefficient buildings and they've only gotten more so with, you know, how we've changed them for COVID. We have these large buildings with very few classrooms, right? Like, that's, you know, not the way you would design energy efficient buildings. Now, I'm glad we I'm glad we did what we did. It's keeping our kids, you know, as safe as possible in the current context. I don't regret it. So there's that piece. And then we get to, you know, like electric vehicles and some of the other pieces. So I can remember earlier about this. And I do think where perhaps we're not moving as much as we want is how does this connect to the larger term vision of environmental justice that the town has? You know, we are Department of the Town, you know, in a different way than the region, you know, perhaps is. And whether that's a goal for me or whether it's a goal for the committee, you know, there is, you know, town government does have a specific sub, I'm going to hopefully it's a subcommittee, but I don't know if it's I get mixed up in the town, how the town government functions that way. But they have a group focusing on on this very item. And and perhaps we need to take a look at that and see what are things that we can do to contribute. You know, we have a lot of real estate in town. You think of these three, you know, relatively large elementary schools, use a lot of energy, right? And so, you know, with two of them, perhaps, you know, having, you know, not a forever shelf life, so to speak, you know, there may be some limits there. But at Cracker Farm, for instance, are there things that we can be doing to think about it? But, you know, I think, you know, we keep doing these incremental things. Rupert and his department are fabulous at continuing to make us as energy efficient as possible. But I think it is worth, you know, contemplating, you know, what are things? How do we work with the town on a larger vision? Because the towns that are the school districts that are doing this well are doing in conjunction with their municipality. You know, that that it's not something separate that the schools do that's sort of divorced from the work of the town. So, you know, whether that's my goal, great. If that's, you know, our goal collaboratively as a district, that's a different way to think about. But I'm really glad you raised that because in the midst of all this other stuff, we can easily forget the climate crisis that's happening around us. So and and we all have a role to play in that, right? I think on the other point on the early childhood center, I think what's hard for me to contemplate right now is, you know, we have expanded the preschool spaces, but space is such at a premium that I think even conversations about space that seemed more doable two years ago, when we had quads at the elementary level, seem very difficult to sort of enact right now. So whether that's working more with the town and what's possible with Head Start. But, you know, in terms of what I'd love to do, my vision would be hosting, you know, I'd love to have younger students, not just preschool age students, but actually younger students. Like, I'd love it to be that community feel. I don't see how that works anytime soon, separate even from COVID pieces, just literally in terms of space. So, you know, how you all want to factor that in and how I write a goal is fine. But I think I just want to acknowledge that point that we all can have visions. Even if I could fund these things, you know, I can't fund the spaces to go along with them at the moment. So it's certainly long winded response, but I thought those are just really valid points that I wanted to respond to. Thank you, Carrie.
Other thoughts, Mr. Demling?
So, yeah, so I really like the comments. You know, the the climate thing, I I don't know whether it it should be a goal, but I do. I almost think it's a overlap for something that we haven't discussed on our committee yet, which is committee goals, where the where the school committee defines strategic directions or goals for the district. And then we take that on to to focus. Because one thing about the the climate stuff is, and I think about the electric buses a lot, where, you know, electric buses are this very evocative thing, right? Where people will see it, oh, electric bus. We get emails about do the electric bus. But in terms of if you had a fixed, if we have fixed amount of capital, which we do, and you want to most efficiently decrease your carbon footprint, where's the best bang for your buck? And it's not an electric buses. If 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 all we had was was just people, more people taking the bus, our our current fossil fuel buses, that would that would do way more for for reducing the carbon footprint. So that's just one little example. So then that that really begs the question for me, OK, well, in all of our our operations and in the way in which we we do business and deliver our our services, where where are our? Where's the lowest hanging fruit for reducing our carbon footprint, right? We can't invest billions and billions in 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 energy efficiency. But if we have X number of dollars, where can we get that? So that we're not just reacting and and feeling motivated to do like performative things. Like, oh, look, we put up a solar panel array in this parking lot or or the the things that are very visible, but might not be the most. Like, I don't know how to answer the question, what's the most practically efficient bang for your buck way to invest? I would love to, whether that's partnering with the town or something, I would I would love to to have that highlighted so that we don't lose track of that. I think Dr. Morris raises a good thing about the pre K. I also don't want to lose sight of that. And yet, you know, as we sort of highlighted at the end of this this discussion on on pre K last spring, you know, the the school's pre K mission is special ed three to five year olds, which is very important, but it's it's that's that's a subset of of every student under kindergarten age level that needs some kind of support and service and families that need support and service for that. And that's a broader question that is way beyond the budget and the schools. And yet, if the community is really going to make progressive movement on this, I would imagine the superintendent would be at the table, right? And you would think that 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 our 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 community learning leader would would be there. So I don't know, really, this is what's difficult for me in terms of how how we proceed as to whether we we make that a goal and say, OK, Dr. Morris, just get it done. You know, you pull together whoever you think you need to do or whether it's, you know, collaborate and establish some kind of a process. So that's where I I kind of struggle there. And I'm glad we're not defining the the goals tonight because I'm realizing I have more questions to answers. So the third the third goal I want to comment on is the the elementary building project. You know, obviously, once that gets going with the designers, going to have a lot of attention. Dr. Morris will be actively involved in that. And yet, it's it's a little, it's somewhat complicated, right? In terms of who's driving the bus at certain pieces at different stages, right? There's the school committee that that ultimately approves, right? And owns the education plan. There's the elementary school building committee that makes certain decisions. There's there's the town council that will make a decision. There's the public that will make a decision. And Dr. Morris is sort of, you know, intersecting at those different stages. So I don't want to sort of say, get the building project done as a goal, right? Without and and expecting leadership or involvement in certain pieces where it's not his role and that he's, you know, feeling uncomfortable, like he's stepping on toes or whatever. So, you know, I would appreciate Dr. Morris sort of taking, just thinking about that in advance of the next goals draft about what will be the best best way to do that.
Other thoughts? I have some, but I'm going to bite my tongue for a little while longer. Okay, I'll give you some airspace. It's an interesting conversation because I think with the early education and it sort of connects into a theme that that you see sort of just tacked on at the end of this, which is sort of tying this to sort of what is our what is our overall mission and sort of our longer term beyond a single school year goal? Whether it's our school committee goals and 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 sort of values as a school committee or as as a district. And you know, I think one of the things that that I think about in in the early education one sort of pops in my head because that was one, we've had it now for two years in a row as as a superintendent goal. And because of COVID, we haven't actually been able to sort of get it over the line as it was originally written, which which did envision sort of including it or considering it in budget. And I think you know, with with COVID and sort of the the other complications, so it's as Dr. Morris spelled it spelled out with space. It's it's not just a money issue. It's a it's a the infrastructure, which is obviously related to money. But it really gets at sort of, how do we think about these goals as they connect over year over year as opposed to being like one and done kind of kind of objectives in a in a single year? Which just like true confessions, the only reason, I think, the the biggest motivating reason to include it in the goal was simply just to, as I think Mr. Demling was just getting at, is just like tie it up and like finish what we started. But I'm not even sure where it's clear to us what what needs to be finished at this point. So I I would be in favor of of including that more in sort of the themes of sort of how do we keep that in mind? I love the way you painted that picture, Dr. Morris, of this of this this grand community sort of of all ages and and sort of just keeping that as sort of maybe a guiding light to inform both the elementary school budget, building project, as well as some of the other considerations that might actually be in our in our plans and then just sort of keeping that as a theme. I like that approach. And I and I think sort of with regard to you know, in in terms of thinking about the goals is in, you know, for the goals for this individual year and sort of go back to our school improvement plans for each each of the schools that was, I I think that was probably two years ago at this point, maybe two and a half years ago when we were trying to work through those. And I think we never finished it because COVID hit. But just sort of connecting and sort of being like reaching back to that and thinking about these these topics or these projects that we've outlined here as potential goals and how they might be contributing to or connecting to some of the 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 objectives and goals that that had been outlined in those school improvement plans. I think that that is a way to sort of pull the thread all the way through across multiple years. And I and I think, you know, with that that climate crisis, I I do really like including that and I and infusing that. You know, the obvious places in that elementary school building project work to keep that as a consideration. But I think, you know, when it comes to sort of the budget and the capital planning, that's another area that I think we can definitely weave weave that in and thinking about how we're spending our budget and where we're and what we're thinking in terms of what we're prioritizing in our capital planning. So I just spoke a long time, Mr. Harrington or Ms. Laura, do you have anything that you want to add to the conversation on goals? It's perfectly OK to say plus one. Great. Any any other sort of thoughts from the committee on this? Not seeing any. Dr. Morris, did you have any questions?
Just next steps would be at the meeting, I guess, on the fifth. I would plan to bring draft goals for your consideration, get feedback and then potentially be voted at the the following meeting after that. Would that be the structure process piece?
Yeah.
I think I think I've got good good information to take a take a stab at it and then get some more feedback before they get finalized. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Moving on, our next item is student enrollment data, including coming on tests. And there's a document presentation attached to this agenda item. And I will turn it over to Dr. Morris, too.
Sure. And this can be well as brief as you all want it to be, but it's just a simple plot of our students in the three schools by grade levels. You can see our preschool is up to 55 students that'll continue to grow. That's about 20 students, a little more than 20 students more than we had last year. Because last year we didn't have typical peers with us in our preschool program. And when students turn three, if they have disabilities, then they can come to school, so that number will grow. It's been great seeing the so selfishly, I just I should, I want to plug it. They have a new name, it's Early Child, Early Education Center at Cracker Farm. They're trying to, and they did some rebranding and new logo. Gosh, it's just great to see the kids outside, you know, and thank goodness that playground was built that. Thanks for all the town of Amherst. They're spending a lot of time outside, but, you know, it's just, it's been delightful to go down on my cracker farm and see the students and to see more students than we were able to have last year. So I want to thank the preschool staff. I know they often understandably feel like, you know, sort of an appendage to the school. I mean, literally, it's at the end of it, but their work is no less critical than anyone else's work to the success of our students in their time here. So you can see that we have a big jump there and across the rest of the district. A bit more students last year, you know, on October 1st, which were really close to that date. We had 1,029 students in our schools in the Amherst and now we're up to 1,055. Again, the bulk of those being preschool students who are enrolled. You can also see it relates a bit to the conversation earlier, although I didn't want to point it out. Oh, yeah, sure. It is on the board docs, but Ms. Spitzer makes a good point. I should be able to share this so that people can look on. I think the other point worth making is that there was a request from the school committee to have an update on the Comanantes enrollment. And you could see this has actually changed with one new student, I want to say today, coming to us. And, you know, it's relative to the district. It's held, you know, relatively constantly. We started in the neighborhood of 38, 39, and we've lost some, we've gained some as students come in, particularly bilingual students. And that's been or monolingual Spanish students at times as well as bilingual students. And that's been a fabulous entry for students. So that's worked remarkably well. So when I look at the enrollments, the other thing I want to note is we see a pretty big drop from fifth grade to fourth grade. So not while not a primary reason to perhaps wait a year for an earlier topic. It is notable that there'd be about 20 less students in fourth grade, the current fourth grade is the grade two, transition up to sixth grade in two years. It's it's not a it's not an insignificant number fewer students than the fifth grade at 157. We have had some give and take. There's more students in certain grade levels and less in others, and some of that's predictable, right? So there's more delta between last year to this year than in a typical year. And we sort of talked about that last year and knew that was likely to be the case that we'll we'd see more differences. Fresh grade got and some of our schools got quite a bit bigger. We know that some students stayed in the daycare program for kindergarten because it was predictable, reliable. And it was the, you know, the kind of first stretch of of COVID. So that's sort of where we're sitting at the moment. Really interesting thing is how the school totals are almost identical. That's that's a change. So if you look at the delta between Wildwood, which is right now, including if you include the preschool, our smallest school. And but all three schools are very, very similar number of students in them. It's a very interesting fact that it waxes and wanes in ways that, you know, tomographers don't seem to ever get right. You know, when we have these studies done, I think Amherst has less predictability than many communities. And I think that's an art, we have an artifact of that, but also Fort River has gotten larger because of the Comanantes program. So I have that 353 students. And there's double digits of those students who are slated for Cracker Farm or Wildwood, but don't attend there because they're choosing to attend the Comanantes program. So that intentional decision the school committee made has also kind of leveled off some of the differences enrollment that we have. So that are just worth noting those pieces and open to any feedback or questions from the committee.
Mr. Demling?
So thank you for putting this together. So obviously, that 32 number of Cracker Farm kindergarten cohort stands out. It's the smallest graded cohort on on the map there and it quite a quite a bit lower than the X grade above it. And, you know, we were all concerned about, are we going to have a drop in enrollment with with people coming back from COVID? So do we do we have any initial speculation about about that cause there other than just our general? You know, evidenceless speculation and and kind of related to that. Do you know when we'll get our first look at charter school numbers? Because that that could have a pretty significant impact if on our budget planning.
if on our budget planning, if 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 a lot of this is is that.
Yep. So on the first front, uh, we saw a lot of transparency in every direction, you know, uh, over the last 18 months. Um, we've had seen students come, we've seen students go, we've had students come, come to our district who've lived in Amherst their whole lives, but um, came to the schools for the first time, and we've seen students depart. And we've seen lots of families depart for other communities. I mean, I think, you know, national trends around uh, people um, changing roles, perhaps changing towns during demographic during the pandemic. I think we realized that here. In terms of charter schools, our school attending report generally is collected, uh, that information is collected usually in December. You know, so we're relying on local, um, not just charter schools, but private schools and schools of choice. Um, October 1 date gets settled, and that's where we get our numbers. Uh, after that date, we start hearing from, and supplying too, because we have choice students as well, uh, the information um, that all goes through uh, a report that has to be filed to the state. Um, and that usually decembers our timeline on that, so we don't have a a great handle on specific, on that specific um, question. But as we get it, we'll bring it back to the committee, and it certainly would have an impact on many, many factors, including financial.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Um, so next up, we have um, agenda pla- future meeting agenda planning. Um, and as mentioned, our next meeting is October 5th. Um, that, on that agenda is the continuation of our conversation on this uh, possible move of sixth grade to the middle school um, with an anticipated vote um, on that decision on that evening. Um, we'll also, as just mentioned, um, have a a first look at draft goals for the superintendent. Um, and also fourth quarter budget, which would be fourth quarter of the prior year. Thank you, FY21. I think the other thing that um, we'll add to that agenda is um, what I referenced at the, in in my update is a conversation about how we want to um, approach our process for budget development this year. Um, building on some of the conversations and and uh, ideas that that we generated at another school committee. Um, you know, how much of that do we want to bring into into this school committee? As well as um, understanding the input and feedback that we received um, from the town council. Other topics? Mr. Demling?
So I don't think we need this as a regular, like, called up agenda item, but um, but we're always getting some level of feedback, and the pandemic continues to evolve. And so um, if if we can make it like a regular part of the superintendent's update, just to briefly touch on um, status of COVID in the schools and um, in our, you know, our our later mitigation strategies, for lack of a better term, and and how that's all going. Um, I just feel funny sometimes, uh, if if I have a specific question about uh, I don't know, how something is being implemented. Um, but but you didn't happen to mention it in the superintendent's update, I don't want to, you know, um, break, break scope of of agenda there. So um, but it, but on the other hand, it's probably too cumbersome to add an entire agenda item to review COVID and stuff from, if it's just going to be the same thing. So um, is that, is that something you think that would be workable, Dr. Morris, or?
Yeah, I I don't mind having it as a semi-regular, same way that we should have the school building committee updates. Sometimes it's going to be more, sometimes it's going to be less, but if we always have it, then, you know, if the update is, things are going really well, we haven't had many new cases, no school-based spread. If that's the update, I think everyone's going to be okay with that. And then if there's more to there, like either the vaccines come out, and we're talking about our, how we're going to try to work with families, or if things turn for the worse, you know? It seems like a good placeholder, um, so I don't mind actually having it on the agenda because it allows for more discussion from the committee, whereas superintendent update would be a little limiting, I think, for the point you raised. I don't know how others feel about that, but.
That works. Okay. Um, well, there, there is time, so if any, any sort of aha moment occurs between now and um, the week before the 5th, um, uh, shoot me an email, um, and um, we can talk about getting that on the agenda. Um, next up is uh, warrant reports, and I have a couple. Because we tackled so many at that last meeting, um, I don't have as many tonight, I have three. I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of $727,167.29 um, dated September 8th, 2021, and I signed that on September 3rd, 2021. I, Allison McDonald signed uh, authorized payroll. Um, the, oh, uh, forgot about this one. Um, payroll in the amount of negative 4,886 dated July 28th, 2021, and I signed that on September 3rd, 2021. And last, I, Allison McDonald authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $331,331.56 for a warrant dated September 1st, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of 157,000 um, $551.35. Um, there's an extra digit there, so that's why I hesitate. Um, revolving fund expenses of $27,070.28, 46, uh, grant fund expenses of $46,670.57, gift of $1,240.59, Article 13 in the amount of $6,222.39, and Article 20 funds of $92,612.38. And I signed that on September 14th, 2021. And that is all. And next up, we have um, gifts, there are some gifts attached to. Uh, we have uh, new gifts, previously sent gifts, um, and a grant. Ms. Spitzer.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion. I move that the Amherst School Committee accept the following gifts from Rafaela and Paul Vigard, apologies for mispronunciation.
Uh, Vigard.
Can you say it again?
Vigard.
Vigard, thank you. Um, in the, from, I'm going to start again. I move that the Amherst School Committee accept the following gifts from Rafaela and Paul Vigard, number 7226, to support the Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $200. From Mary Ellen McCarthy, assuming it's revocable trust in number 671, to support the Susan Vigard, Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $100. From Felice Diaz Arango, the name out, uh, to support the Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $100. And for Marta Moselle Layama, how model number 6345G professional trumpet with case and accessories with an estimated value of $12,000 for a total of $400.
I um, would like to amend uh, that motion, the, the trumpet has an estimated value of $1,200, it looks like.
Sorry, did I say 12? It's getting late. Apologies.
I'll second the motion with the amendment. And we'll take a vote. Um, actually, well, we'll just stay on this one since we've already moved on that. Um, uh, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord? Ms. Lord, aye. Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Yes, I see, I need to make another motion. So I moved that the Amherst School Committee accept the following gifts from Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $502.84. In addition, from Martha Oliver, number 996079, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10 for a total of $512.84.
Second.
I'm not sure, am I looking at? There's a, there's, the page I'm looking at dated September 15th has a lot more on that than just those two.
And I made a mistake, I, I, the AMH gifts previously sent had two pages, and I only read the gifts on the first page, and I neglected to read them on stated August 13th. So that's the error, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I made that mistake too. Um, uh, I'll second that, any discussion? Saying none, um, roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And I'm going to close that so I don't get confused again. Um, I move that the Amherst School Committee accept the following gifts from Michael Wick, MD, number 212, to support the Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $300. From Anita Pelis and George Pelis, number 673, to support Wildwood uh, Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $20. From Judith Becker Healy, number 1585, to support the Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $50. From Elizabeth Gulliver Cash, um, to support Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $10. From Anonymous Cash to support Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $20. From Sarah and Chris Owen to support the Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $25. From Soleil Sonoda, number 159, to support the Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $50. From Howard Sonoda, number 6355, to support Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $100. From Elisa Melnick, number 1308, to support the Wildwood Susan Vigard Camp Scholarship in the amount of $150. From the Wildwood PGO, number 995094, to support Wildwood at principal discretion in the amount of $750. And from Martha Oliver, number 996213, to support Crocker Farm at principal discretion in the amount of $10, total gift amount of $1,485. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer, roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And we have two grants. Um, I'll move that we accept the following grants um, from Amherst Education Foundation to support garden learning and ethnic studies using outdoor spaces to decolonize the curriculum in the amount of $3,795. From Amherst Education Foundation to support playground picture communication board in the amount of $3,200 for a total grant amount of $6,995. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer, and a roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes unanimously. And um, thank you to all of our generous gift givers and to the Amherst Education Foundation. And would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm moved to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Second.
I was trying to change it up so it's not always McDonald and Spitzer making these motions. And I also want to note that we are exactly two and a half hours, nice job, everybody. Um, so there's no discussion on on this motion, um, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Um, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.